Okay, welcome back to Rego's session. We did have an action taken during executive session. I'll let Ms. Kennedy read that back to us. All right, thank you. I'm gonna ask that we, I'm gonna skip to 6B first and allow Ms. Baker to introduce the new director, Matthew Powell, before we have our stormwater training, since that'll take a little bit longer, so be welcome to come to podium, Ms. Baker and Mr. Powell. Thank you for being patient and waiting. I'm sorry with our executive session.
Well, thank you for having us. Is it okay if I get in?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Basically, we wanted to thank you for your support over the years and let you know how well we're progressing this year with our addition of our new executive director, Matthew Powell. He comes to us as a graduate from Ole Miss and I fear some of y'all will be thrilled with that, with a degree in history. You want to tell them a little bit more about?
Sure. My previous work experience, I've been with the National Park Service as well as most recently as a campus researcher and docent with the Slavery Research Group at the University of Mississippi. I was crucial in getting that off of the ground floor and now it's implemented at the university and it's something I am very, very proud of. Also, you know, we are open at the museum, so I, you know, would like to urge everybody watching over our live stream as well as everyone in attendance, including the council, to come by and see me sometime. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're so excited about moving this to the next level and what the Pointe Grays House adds to our community and getting it up more so, I mean, getting the profile up more so more people are going by there and seeing it and more activities and programs. So, thank you for all that y'all do.
Yes, and I will report to you, we had to, of course, stop the field trips. We have fourth graders come through, every fourth grader in Pascagoula, Moss Point and Resurrection Schools comes through usually for our field trips. We had to stop those this year because of COVID and we were closed for just a little while when, you know, the governor mandated us, but other than that, we've been open and continually seeing a slow trickle of people. But we expect to be through with the restoration of the house in March and it's inside interpretation. We're working with a professional company and that should be, that's coming along also. We've just done some renovations inside the museum with some corrections and cleaning up some issues that we had. So, it's looking really good. It's very exciting that we've got all of our artifacts and our displays up in perfect condition. So, please do come by and see us when you can and thank you for your support. Like I said, of course, we started out with, you know, a lot more than we're getting now, so if y'all manage to find any money in the budget, we'd love to have it on our way. Thank you again.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Donovan, thank you for, and Mr. Estes, thank you for allowing us to skip that little part and go to you for your up and I think they've headed out some slides and this is some stormwater.
Well, and I'm gonna be brief. I know you guys already had a long evening and everybody's looking forward to getting to a point of a little R and R for the holiday, so I am gonna be brief. For a number of years, we've had the privilege of working with the city of Pascagoula to manage your Phase Two stormwater program and we appreciate the faith that you put in us to allow us to continue to do so. I'm happy to say that your program, you are in compliance with your program at this point. The only glitch right now is not a city problem, it's not a consultant problem, it's a state problem. Almost four years ago, we prepared and submitted a new stormwater management plan along with associated documentation to get a new permit issued. DEQ has yet to review and comment on that. I actually called them on the way down today and they could not give me an answer as to where they are on bringing that to a logical conclusion. I just left a negotiations board meeting. What I suggested to them, and I'll suggest the same to you, is to allow me to draft a letter that Mr. Silverman can send to DEQ on your behalf, encouraging them to go ahead and review and comment on the draft permit. Be happy to do that. The other thing's going on tomorrow morning, I'll be at Donovan's office and we'll be doing some staff training. We'll focus on illicit discharge detection, reporting, documentation. We'll also focus on pollution prevention and good housekeeping, which is just, you know, your public works facilities where you store materials, used oil, that sort of thing, to make sure that it's being stored in a way that does not contribute to water quality impairment. And I told you I would be brief and I'll be happy to answer any questions, but we do appreciate the faith that you continue to put in us to help you with this program.
Any questions? Mr. Estes, do you need a motion for us to draft that letter? Can you just draft that?
Okay.
All right, well, thank you for coming out and being with us.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for all that you do and we'll try to get that letter of support drafted and get it back to you as well.
Well, I'll actually draft something and send to Mr. Silverman.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That sounds great.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Y'all have a Merry Christmas.
Next, we have 6C Waste Pro presentation.
Yes, sir. We have Mr. G. Boy here tonight. Waste Pro has made a request to have a rate increase effective January 1st, 2021. As of course, as the contract is set up, it requires council consideration through the point of action that's placed. And Mr. G. Boy is here tonight to discuss any items pertaining to that rate increase request.
Welcome to the podium and just tell us a little overview about it.
Based, we had submitted a rate increase to the council, to the city manager. Per the contract, it was over in July for the first two years. In the contract, it says we are allowed to ask for a, or we're allowed for the CPI increase based on the previous years. Also, it was amended in the contract before we signed that if we increased, if we incurred significant other costs based on landfill, things like that, that we could ask for the council to approve that also. Unfortunately, this last year, we did incur a 37% increase in waste management from their landfill, which was, I've never even seen anything of an increase that much. It's just ridiculous. So, we didn't, we didn't push forward the entire amount of increase. We looked at where we need to be to be able to manage the city and still be a good partner with you all, and that, that's where this all stems from. We could have actually applied for this back when the contract anniversary timeframe, but due to the COVID and everything that was going on, we decided as a good partner, that's just not the right time. But now that it's coming into a new year, I felt like we need, we need to do this now because we're incurring way too many costs. As a company, we've already incurred $7.9 million in, in reduction of services and extra costs for our, for our company because of just the COVID and the storms. So, that's why we're asking for this. I would ask that you would definitely consider it and I'm open for any questions you might have.
Do you have, did you provide any backup documentation showing the rate increases to you, the 35 or the 37%?
I had sent the information that we gave to, from our letter from Waste Management to the city manager. Unfortunately, the Waste Management is against our policy to expose their rates that they provide to anybody, because every rate they give every company is different. Like, they'll provide a different rate for Harrison County Utility Authority. They'll provide a different rate for Pelican Waste, for us, for any other companies that do business with them. They will not provide an actual number for us. So, that's just, it's a number that we calculated for you. I can show you, I can send that to Michael as far as the estimated cost value. Right now, it's based, the amount of cost per Pascagoula in disposal that we've incurred this year over last year, based on the increase, is $87,000. That's how we determined the actual increase ask of 97 cents, which is less than the actual 1.2 tons per household that we collect in the city.
And then the recyclable cost, is there, do you have anything that'll show us your increase there? The increase for the recyclables?
Recyclables, that's actually a comment, it's actually on the web where it shows that we went from two year ago, two years ago from the ECUA at $15 a ton to $25 a ton and now in 2020, it's gonna be $45 a ton. Which unfortunately is just gonna keep on going up unless something changes in the market. I will let you know, ma'am, the, the actual, per our last conversation, the amount of actually contaminated recycling has dropped significantly. So, it must have really been a spike after when COVID first started, everyone was home, didn't have enough garbage cans and they had all that extra waste at their house because they're taking their takeout, they're bringing it home, and just that much more garbage per household, which is a good thing.
Jennifer, you finished?
Oh, go ahead.
It's not really intended for you, John, but more for Michael. Just a little history, back when we had the issue of, of the deficit that came to our attention in 2018, it also kind of came to our attention that perhaps some of our rates for water and sewage were perhaps below what we should have been collecting in order to, you know, basically keep our head above water. In other words, it's, you know, it's intended to be very much a pass through our utility fund. And so, I remember distinctly making a comment at the time that, you know, obviously, everybody can adjust better when you increase rates a little bit at a time versus a big jump at one time after having steady rates for one year, or for a number of years. So, I guess my question to you is, is that has any analysis or evaluation been done by you or Charlene to pretty much decide, look, are our water and sewer rates where they need to be in order to make sure that we're adequately covering our costs? And if not, I think that's probably something that just does need to be done, just to make sure we're, we're where we need to be.
Yes, sir. I think that's a valid point. We've not conducted an analysis yet, but that's something we can certainly sort of.
Okay. Because again, I think it's good that if, and, you know, John, I don't mean to make you the bad guy, I'm just saying that, that if we're going to increase rates for one thing, it's probably a good time to at least, look at the data and see where we are for the other, the water and sewer and, you know, maybe it's time to bring it down or maybe it's time to put it up. We just don't know at this point. So, I'm just asking if that evaluation can be done and maybe make a presentation to the council sometime in January.
Certainly can be, that's what I'm hoping for.
Any other questions?
Michael, do you, do we, either one of you, do we need to make a motion now or is that something, I mean, what, you looking for a motion from us?
Well, if this were going to be approved and if the rate increase was going to be passed through, there would have to be a public notice, publication period. So, and I don't have a publication ready to roll right now. We wouldn't have to do that right now, but it would potentially require separate approval for that. Other things you can afford to go into of that publication period.
Then...
And if you want to include another, we're gonna have to wait anyway.
I agree with that. I, I want to go on record as saying, you know, Waste Pro, there may be issues, other issues that are not, you know, subject to our conversation right now, but, you know, CPI, 3.4% is not a big increase and I'm sure even if, you know, my costs have gone up by 3.4%, more than that. And so, it's not, if they were in here asking for 10 or 15, it'd be a completely different story, but basically trying to keep pace with inflation or Consumer Price Index, I don't have a real big problem with that. It's certainly, under the circumstances, it's certainly reasonable, but I agree. I mean, let's kind of look at it holistically and, and John, I don't mean to put you off, we're, it's a little behind the eight ball anyway because we couldn't implement it January 1, even if we wanted to.
Understood.
So, I think let's just, if we could, take a look at it next month, see where we are with the other water and sewer and, and then make a decision at that point. I think that's the best way to handle it.
And I have to say that the purpose for my questions were, was anytime we raise any rates on a taxpayer, you have to explain and you have to show proof of why we're doing that.
Yes, ma'am. I understood.
That's the purpose of my question.
Yeah. I agree with that completely.
You know, also, it'd be good if you have, you know, how much your tonnage that you've had to pick up extra, you've sent us that information, you can make that available as well, because you have had a lot more debris pickup. And then we've had three hurricanes too that you've had to participate in as well. So, you know, that kind of just builds a reasoning or argument of why the cost of living increase makes sense.
And I will say that Michael did work with us and we actually did submit a CARES Act bill for that. So, this, this really has nothing to do with the extra amount we're picking up because we have incurred a tremendous amount more than we normally would, but this, this year is all out of whack depending on what it is. It's just, those prices won't go back. The last thing I want to do and we want to do is ask for a price increase for the residents. Unfortunately, that's a situation we're in as the manager of our office and my employees. For me to be able to give them increased salaries based on inflation and things like that, this is something we have to do. Because obviously, we're not trying to make millions on this city or any city, but our, but we do have to take care of our people also, because no one's here not to make a business. So, and I do appreciate the opportunity to come and present. I'm available for any questions you have after, before, and if you need me to send any information to Michael, I'll definitely do that. Thank you very much and you all have a Merry Christmas.
Let's see, number seven, any public comments this night? Michael, is there anybody listed for public comment?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Chief Council, anyone here for that? Okay. Next, we move to our consent agenda. Any questions on any of the items here? I will make one comment on 9D, the title and grant agreement. We've got $300,000 for Pointe Park, which is great, and I want to make sure that we get that wrapped up with the engineering or the suggested repairs and so that we can have this, you know, this whole strategy, having everything ready to go by the spring when they utilize launches in the parks and the fishing and, you know, the road going to the river parks. So, again, hopefully you can get the, our engineers back in and give us a, you know, a plan.
Yes, sir. The plan this time is Jeff Clumkin's going to be coming to the January 3 meeting with a task board and just provide a little more information about the project.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, one, one question about, Michael, about the 9G, the local emergency complaint regarding Zeta.
Yes, sir.
I guess that is necessary, even though the storm was six or more weeks ago, it's necessary in order to make sure that all the collection costs of the debris that we incurred are potentially reimbursable from FEMA?
Yes, we just want to have that coverage in place just so we can have that documented.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Can I hear a motion? We approved a consent agenda as written?
Second.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify the same aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we move on to the city manager's report. Mr. Silverman?
Yes, sir. In our November city council meeting, it was presented to council the termination of the baseball tournament organizer agreement, Travel Ball Select, and the termination of the softball organizer agreement with USAY Sports. We have received a termination of the agreement, a mutual termination of the agreement with Travel Ball Select. Unfortunately, we've not heard back from USAY Sports. In Section 6 of our agreement with USAY Sports, it allows us to provide a written termination of notice after 30 days. We're requesting that termination take place through Section 6 and providing them 30-day written notice that the agreement will be terminated, so we'll have enough time, cover the spring season to ensure that any softball organizer that wants to use the facilities can, as long as they conform with our athletic director if they're set up for it.
Any questions on that item from Mr. Silverman? If not, can I hear a resolution that we approve the termination of softball organizer agreement?
Second.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next.
Just to give you a little bit of background on this one, about 10 months ago, we had Curtis Morris from the Police Department take over as the harbor master for Inner Harbor. He has addressed a lot of matters at Harbor's case, operations, regulations, and making improvements at Harbor that we have seen legislative strides take place, the leadership and guidance, and we're very appreciative for all the work that's taking place at Harbor so far. As part of the next steps to make his job easier from an enforcement standpoint and also from an operational safety standpoint, we've provided some updates, regulations, and an update to the agreement for council review and consider approving. We also have Officer Morris here tonight to address any questions. He has been an excellent representative for our community and made a lot of strong connections with folks that currently are leasing space at Harbor. And I'm happy to address any questions along with Officer Morris or Mr. Morris who helped to craft this, these agreements and regulations.
Let me ask you real quick on the, there, I don't mean to get off in the weeds, there has been a persistent complaint I've heard about the inability or the depth of the inner harbor. A lot of it has to do with the fact that we can't really afford to dredge it, certainly not in the last several years. It's been a decade since I had a boat in the, or took a boat into the inner harbor. How significant is the depth problem due to the inability to dredge right now?
The depth problem is a major issue. I have spoke with Walters Diamond and Marine several, several months ago and had one of their representatives come out and take a look. The harbor was evaluated several years ago and I don't remember which engineer company done that, but I was able to make contact eventually with the company that did or, or a representative that worked for the company at the time who sent me the, the evaluation that they done. You were looking at about a $4 million project to go down and do what needed to be done. However, the dredging cannot be done until the bulkhead is replaced. The current bulkhead that's down there is, is in very bad shape.
These are wooden bulkheads, right?
It's steel. It's metal.
Okay.
That bulkhead, best I can tell, has been there somewhere between 50 to 70 years and it's the original bulkhead. We've already seen some minor problems associated with it where water's penetrating through. We had some sidewalks collapse in which the street department went down and backfilled it and fixed those issues. Those issues are gonna continue over the years. I don't know how fast it'll happen. I don't know how long it'll last, but eventually it's, it's gonna be a problem. The engineers say if you dredge now, the entire thing will cave in, so dredging is impossible until that bulkhead is replaced. At the time that I talked to Walters, we were looking at about a million and a half to replace the bulkhead. In that replacement of the bulkhead, they would also replace the pilings that are in now. They would have to remove the pilings that are currently there. The ones that are currently there can't be put back, so they would have to replace those with new pilings, which would be a good thing for the harbor. But dredging is really bad. At low tide, I would say at least half of the vessels that reside in the harbor can't leave. They have to wait till the tide's at a certain level. They have to plan their exit at the right time. They have to plan their return at the right time or they can't get in and out.
So, 4 million plus the 1.5?
No, ma'am.
Are all 4 million, all inclusive?
The original estimate and talking to some other vendors, they think that was a little high.
Okay.
Now, I don't know. This number could possibly have changed since I spoke with Walters Diamond. Material prices could have changed. I don't know. I would need to get another up-to-date estimate. Now, we did apply for some grant funding for the bulkhead and the dredging. It was through DMR, I believe, the Go Mesa.
Go Mesa, yes, sir.
And that particular grant money had DMR furloughed most of the summer, so I, I don't know where that stands. But we did apply for, for grant funding for those projects.
We are, we're still waiting on this.
Yeah, we're still waiting.
Do the larger heads that, you know, have gone through the time.
And how many slips are down there now that are rented by the city to boat owners?
There are 23 total slips. As of right now, I have two that would be vacant, but one of those a current tenant will move to at the appropriate time. And I have one on the waiting list waiting to come in. That will leave me with one vacant slip that is rentable at this time. I have about three slips that the depth's just so bad that they're unusable by any decent respectable sized vessel. And what we have actually started doing is we've started putting jet skis in some of these, these lesser slips just because of the depth of the water.
Right.
Do you need us to approve this reservation?
Yes.
To the board?
Mayor, I would just point out that what, it'll be pretty slightly different than what was discussed on the agenda. There are a couple minor additions that would be...
This is, this is what you're, before us.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the inner harbor birthing and lease agreement and the regulations as drafted by council.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Is the ordinance, is that different, Michael, the Tennessee, the Chapter 94 of the Code of Ordinance?
Yeah, yeah. That'll need separate approval.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We adopt a proposed amendments to Chapter 94 of the City Code of Ordinances.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, 10D?
Yes, sir. At our last city council meeting, we had a representative from the Jackson Carnival Association come speak with council just to get a better sense of where the city stood with having Mardi Gras for 2021. You will see attached just a list of some of the cancellations that have taken place so far due to COVID-19 concerns. Mobile is limiting the permitting process for different parades and carnivals, which would indicate that there's a high likelihood that the Mardi Gras parades will be canceled. New Orleans has completely canceled their parades. We also have a few other coastal cities on Mississippi that have already canceled. This is rapidly approaching and so we're just trying to get a better sense of whether this event can be held in here given that this is a big part of the city.
Does it require formal action from us or is it pretty much, we need to, I mean, I guess, I guess, does the Carnival Association want us to basically say we're not gonna issue a permit if requested or what?
I imagine what the Carnival Association would like to hear is just that... is just that at this time, given the COVID-19 concerns, permits won't be issued, given the large crowds and gatherings that will be taking place, given that past estimates have been between 20,000 and 25,000 people that attend these events.
It's hard, would be hard pressed to have a parade with that many people and have all the rest of the states shut down. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't protect our citizens. It wouldn't be. So I entertain a motion that we not permit parades this year and support not having it go forward. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A second. So we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, 10E.
Well, we have some exciting news. Taylor McNeil has been appointed to the federal bench. But unfortunately, that means with his appointment that he will have to resign his position on the Pascagoula Negotiable District Board. And tonight before he's resolution seeking advertisement for resumes to fill that vacancy that will filter the remainder of the term until March 11th.
Motion to request resumes. Can someone move on that?
Move on.
So moved. Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Jennifer, will that be our fourth appointment that we've made, twice to the same spot?
It will be, and we'll do it again in our February.
Wow. Okay.
Next, 10F.
Yes, sir. City council previously had deducted $10,000 from an invoice that Waste Pro submitted. Waste Pro recently submitted an invoice for services provided, and they're seeking the $10,000 that was originally deducted and adding it to this invoice. Currently, it's a $116,000 invoice. In the resolution, it would be set up to say that $106,000 will be approved, keeping that $10,000 off of the invoice that was submitted.
Any further discussion?
I know I'm going senile probably at 54, but I couldn't remember. I remember the issue about the $10,000, I think, had to do with Waste Pro's response on to the storm and the damage to the facility, the recycling facility, and in Pensacola, and additional costs that were said to be incurred from using the recycling facility in Louisiana. Have I got that correct?
The, if you want to speak, the $10,000 fine was for the... We weren't getting all the piles picked up in the normal sequence that they normally would be picked up because it'd be an extra amount of work that was put on us by COVID and the multiple storms we had on the coast. Sally, Marco, Cristobal, Zeta. So we went from running one truck to actually running three and running six days, maybe it's at five. And there were piles that weren't being picked up every day like they normally would. So that was assessed, $100 per day. The fine would have been a lot more. I guess the council pulled on a numeral of 10,000 compared to what it would have been. Our claim at that time was that because we were under a national emergency, act of God, whatever you call COVID, that the normal transition of how we're supposed to pick up debris was something that was out of our control and out of the city's control. So that's what we have come back to. The city asking for that most fines to be removed. That's worth $10,000.
I move that we pay the invoice at the amount of $106,383.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks. Next, 10G.
Yes, sir. The last item underneath the city manager pertains to the landing for the basketball courts at MCC Park. Fortunately, the basketball court construction process has finished up. There has been requests from different citizens in the community to see if landing could be added to this facility. Compton Engineering has looked at potential landing options, and they got up with, with the Sebring River, is it that?
Sebring.
Sebring River to see if that landing that area will use ability purposes. And the estimated cost for that, to add that landing, will be $2,187 plus tax. And this time, Jeff and I are happy that taking the questions you may have about landing that area.
Jeff, I've sent an email out about this question. I know the soccer fields are on a timer, and that's because the gate has to be kept locked. And there may not be access, and so they go off at a particular time. Are the baseball fields, the baseball and softball field on the same timer at MCC?
It's not quite as fancy as the one at the soccer field. But yeah, the baseball lights have a timer that kicks it out. So even if you turn the switch on after a certain hour, it won't come on until, you know, the timer kicks it back on. These, Sebring River's doing this under their streetlight program, so they're not metered lights. In other words, there's no dedicated metered service with a panel that you can go out and turn them on and off. It's hooked directly in, just like their streetlights are.
Which I'm assuming means they're cheaper if it's on the streetlight.
And that's why it is so inexpensive compared to if you, I mean, you could go to Mississippi Power, even though it's, Sebring River's area. Mississippi Power could do it under a lease program like they did the sports complex lighting, but it's going to be more, obviously. And then, of course, you have the option to put them in yourselves that we had pricing on, but it was like $40,000. But under their streetlight program, it would be the same as adding, I forgot how many lights it was total. It's like about 10 or 8.
It was not like 17 lights.
They, it'd be just like adding that many streetlights across the city. It's hooked straight into their power source, so there's no disconnect or panel, or they can't put a timer on it. It'll just be on photo cells. So it'll kick on at dusk and then kick off, you know, when sun rises, so. And it's basically street lighting over the parking area, and then it's more of a floodlight-type light over the courts, but they're in the corners, aiming down at the court, so.
They'll be LED lights, right?
Yeah.
It's a great prize to me. This is, I love the fact.
Well, and you don't have to maintain it. That's the beauty. Anything happens, and that includes, storm comes along, knocks a pole down, you know, there, there was it after a place.
And I love the fact that it's, you know, I like that it's lighted all night. I mean, when the police drive by there, they can see if there's any activity or anybody that shouldn't be there. I mean, I think that's probably has some advantage to it as well.
Right, and Stephen had asked about the, you know, the apartments that are fairly close, but it's about 600 feet. And I looked, they had sent the lighting contours of what they're doing, and it doesn't extend very far out, outside the courts. So, I mean, you'll see it, obviously, but it's not going to be, you know, blow into somebody's window, so.
Sure.
Not be keeping anybody away.
Do I?
Not be keeping anybody away.
No.
Any further questions?
Roger.
How quick do you think we can get them up and going?
As soon as they, although, if y'all approve it, Michael just has to make the formal request to them. And I, well, it's a good question, honestly, because it took them a long time to get this back to us. And in their defense, they had multiple storms. And this last one, I did not realize how much damage they had north of us in the rural areas. So they have just been slammed. But he did indicate that they pretty much got on top of that. So, yeah, I would think over the next couple of months. They would, once they start, I mean, they'll get it in in a matter of a week or two, so.
Are there any motions that we approve that apply to the proposal?
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Jeff, thank you.
Thank y'all. And look, just so you'll know, the day we did the punch list out there, the walkthrough, literally, there was probably 20 guys waiting to get on that court. And they were super nice, and then they thanked the city for, you know, giving them something out there to play on, because they were really appreciative of it.
The sooner we can get the lights, the better, as far as I'm concerned. So if we can make it a priority, Michael.
Yes, sir. I'll submit the form tomorrow, but Jeff is correct. In Mississippi Power, if you have to deal with the law, we'll get that form in quickly so that we can have it.
Great.
Good, good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have something to add, something to the city manager.
Oh, I just, I just, yeah, just an update on how it.
For I can be part of our industry?
Well, yeah, I think we're a market street still, yeah.
I'm going to turn to, I don't know, the, I think, updating some of the market street reputation.
Yeah, our 90-day period came to an end. And I mean, I would say, you know, 50/50 successful. There were some business owners who were receptive, some who maybe were not as receptive. Rebecca Jane and I are planning on meeting again. We met after to kind of debrief. But brainstorm ideas of what we, the three of our entities, can do to make it help better instead of just asking, you know, businesses to take it, to do their part as well. So maybe exploring grant options or something that may be able to help us make market street look better. But if you driven down it, there are some, there's one building that's doing, it looks like a focus side to make the outside look better, which is great. And then the old gym is being turned into three separate, I spoke to the owner on Friday, three separate businesses. They rented one out, which is going to be a restaurant. I believe a seafood restaurant down there, south of Bengals. And then they have two open spots, too. So there is movement on that area, which is good.
Now, are we going to move to another part of the city and try to do the same thing?
Yeah, we can. We haven't identified a spot yet.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, next, under 11, claims pocket. Is there a motion or approval of claims pocket?
So moved.
Motion, and is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, mayor council items. Anyone have anything they'd like to bring up other there? There it is.
Make a motion. We go into a closed session to determine whether an executive session is needed.
Sure.
There's a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, to add a resolution addressing the request for an increase in the design fee from BNA, BMA, excuse me, for the Pascagoula Sportsplex expansion.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Ready.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, I request, or I make a motion that we approve the design fee increase requested by Brown Mitchell and Alexander on July 24, 2020, based on the percentage of construction cost reflected in change order number four, less the cost incurred by the city of Pascagoula for the purchase and installation of padding for the brick backstops on the fields.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We amend the agenda to approve in part pay application number 18 for the Pascagoula Sportsplex.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve in part pay application number 18 for the Pascagoula Sportsplex, to the extent that it would maintain an amount of retainage of no less than $125,250.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, the best motion of all was to motion to, again, to January 5, 2021, and leave 2020 behind us. There's a motion?
So moved.
A second. Everybody's a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Merry Christmas, everyone. Thank you for joining us.